I'll put my email. Wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. I did, I'm pulling it up, I just wanted to make sure you're on the same page. So we both were like.
I salute the United States of America and as you give a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, also, our reorganization statement here. And the partnerships with the communities, the vision, the mission of the Dillworth-Lincoln-Fulton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect, they become self-directed, responsible, lifelong learners. Role call, all board members are present, Superintendent Hudson is present, and yes. Any changes to the agenda? No change to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Brittany, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comments, uh, no public comments, rebel recognition. Uh, we got wrestlers going to state?
Yes, so Katie, we have three, right?
Bryce Fisher, Roy Road, and Jacob Luthy.
Awesome.
Davy Bosin was coach of the year, and Greg Schmitz was assistant coach of the year.
To this section.
To this section.
Something too.
Wonderful. And tournament time starts for always basketball, yep. The next week, and then is dance done, you'll probably give us an update on that, but, um.
There goes Davy right there.
So I know it's been a busy, uh, busy winter season, and with lots of games and lots going on, so. I did hear that Tracy's tournament this weekend went well.
Yes.
It was very busy.
Lots of kids, um, I've had a few people that I work with that live in different communities that commented on how wonderful our building was and our gyms. Um, so that was very nice to hear that.
I was in pre-grade Dillworth. Yeah, there was lots of comments, yeah, about, like, even if it was unfinished, nice things to say, like, wow, this is a huge space, like that big hallway.
Yeah.
Nice things about the new gym too.
And the cafeteria for where they had concessions and stuff was very nicely set up. The bright colors, people liked that up in the lunchroom.
Yeah, I think using the cafeteria was a nice thing to give lots of people space, so you didn't have to just, like, sit in the gym because there was no, not enough seating for that anyways, because there were just chairs, so, yeah, it worked out nicely.
Did they have the, in the north and south, those munchers must have been a little bit?
They were in the big gym, we were in the small gym. There was.
We were all friends.
No, it was good, I talked to her too, how did it go, we did make a pretty nice deposit today in the bank too, because, uh, because we had a lot of money upfront, we had to put into to make sure it could happen, uh, again, kudos to Tracy, actually, her family, like she says, they're all vol and told. The apartment, so, they just lost their whole family, they spent three or four hours in Dillworth yesterday cleaning out the kitchen, making sure that the kitchen staff today upon return walked in and it looked as good or better than when they left Friday. So that's a commitment she's given to the district, and it just, it's very important, but they say I've sent her emails, called her yesterday. She's super, she gets really excited about it, jacked up and wants it to go well, and because of that, it does go well, so, kudos to her again.
And I heard some administrative staff was helping with setting up stuff on Fridays, so they took time to balance everything, so that was good too.
Yep, it was.
Also, shout out to people who volunteer their time to work concession sales, ticket booth, all that kind of stuff, because there were adults and kids and all sorts of helpers, so, we didn't have to be there, and they, they put their time in, so, that was appreciated.
Yeah, Nike teams, I think.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's crazy.
Shout out to our senior athletes as they finish up their winter sports career, every game I'm like, one step closer being done, I don't know if I'm ready yet, but sure enjoying it, so. Any other rebel recognition?
Speech needs, speech, there's one for.
Awesome.
When lots of individuals, rebels and profits are.
No one, that is our speech department. They're wrong. They do, speech team is positive. Awesome, glad to hear it. Okay, we'll move on to the reports, Katie, you're up, H O L report.
Yes, so, just taking one of those that pass along, so my actual, um, full report isn't till, I think, the end of March. But, we are voting as an H O L, at the H O L conference, they're voting, um, on the addition of two schools to our H O L conference, um, so you can see there, if you don't know a lot about our conference, the current schools we have, um, there's seven of them, and we've received letters to add Staples-Motley and Park Rapids to our conference. Um, all coaches, I have reached out to all coaches, and they were able to give a vote, and they all are in support of this addition. One of the big reasons is, seven is a pretty small conference, um, and so adding these two schools will make us nine, which will be really nice. Um, and we honestly play, we don't play Staples in a lot of things, but we play Park Rapids in almost everything anyway. So it'll just be another scheduled game, which will be really nice. Um, the other thing, the schools are both double A, uh, which does mean a lot, when you look at seedings and things like that, it's important to play, um, your level or above, also you get seated better. So, like, one of the cons would be, we would lose a few non-conference games for some activities, just because we didn't play Staples, and now we have to add them in, and we need to then broadly. And lastly, this would be effective for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-fives this year, so not next year, but a while from here. Um, so I'm just supportive of this, it's not anything that I'm voting on, but I just wanted maybe you all aware, and see if you have any other concerns, anything you want to brought up. Um, we actually vote on Wednesday.
Not football, because that's still the district.
That is district, yeah.
Fans, so it's volleyball, basketballs, baseball, softball, uh, track, okay? Cross-country, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, but most things.
Yeah, most things.
Because Staples and Park Rapids are in the same conference right now.
Yeah, are they in the mid-state? And I think the mids are, are they not in the mid-state? The mid-state kind of sounds like it's deteriorating, so, um, we actually thought we'd maybe get a request from D L, and then everything would be a different conversation, probably, just not that we wouldn't have done it, but we didn't get a letter from them, so.
Okay, so when we were up in Park Rapids, they had, you know, Staples and Park Rapids, and they have a, that was like maybe six schools, it's a small con, they're a small conference, so these are going to be, that's going to be disbanded.
Yeah, and I think that they know that their conference is going to dissolve, and so they're trying to be ahead of it.
I think what's happened to them, like, a lot of areas is, you get some consolidations, some two-way schools are getting smaller, turning into A's, or A's going to two-way, and it's there's just a lot of kind of fluctuation with it, I think, and that's probably what's getting them too.
And it sounds like too, they like the thought of the H O L is very competitive compared to a lot of conferences, and um, so, kind of like you said, I think that they're maybe not getting the competition that they want or desire where they're at.
And it's not so far away, I mean, it's.
Right, yeah, the biggest one would be Breckenridge and, like, Park Rapids, and they're figuring that out on their own, they might do a double, be in the council hall, and just be wanting to be like us. Doesn't really affect us, so.
Interesting, thanks for your take, Katie. Alright, uh, board, any reports, uh, first one on is personal committee.
Alright, we had a meeting, um, where we basically discussed the finance and paycheck issues that were going on, and Shannon gave us an overall update on that, and assured us that everything was moving in the right direction, um, was either resolved or at least solved and working towards a resolution, so that was positive. And then we discussed that there were multiple bargaining units up for negotiations this year, and so they kind of just filled me in on what that looks like since I knew. Thank you.
Want to talk about today too?
Yeah.
We met with the union today too, we're all aligned, um, writing the grievance, and it's kind of a formality, and I guess in terms of the grievance, but um, the idea is trying to get the payroll situation fixed, and we're making really good progress, um, but it is complicated, and there's a little bit more to go, and hopefully, within the next uh, few weeks, we'll have some more answers, and hopefully, we'll see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, on the.
And the district leadership meeting was canceled because of the storm on Thursday, so we'll be next month on the.
Right, yeah, not next, not, not this Thursday, the following, so a week from Thursday.
Thank you. Uh, community advisory council, Brittany?
Uh, we met last week, and mainly just to go over the summer rec brochure. So Tracy has, like, a rough draft, just waiting on some dates and coach information, times, like, gym times and stuff like that before it comes out.
Wonderful, any other committees need? Alright, uh, superintendent report, you're up.
Well, first thing on there is, um, here today and gone tomorrow, so. I leave in the morning, I, I am taking a week off fishing in Canada, so, looking forward to that, so just a heads up on that. Uh, second thing is legislative update, um, met with Senator Quebec today, uh, this afternoon, and discussed, uh, some school legislation and budgeting and the governor's proposal, and uh, M S, A M R E A, and M S B A's proposals, and kind of reviewed, you know, the one thing, uh, you know, he's an elected official. I said our school district has elected officials, they're called school board, and I said, I think it's important to let them manage with the superintendent our district. And so when we talk about funding, and we're super appreciative, this could be, uh, a year where the state gives some more funding to schools. I said the key to that is that they're not restricted. So, yep, we gave you four percent, but two percent is already set up for this, you can't do anything with it except for that. So I said, with mandates comes no choice. Whether it's what courses you have to have to graduate, we already have most of those, we don't need somebody to tell us that. Our school board knows that we need more than anybody, and that's why they're elected. If they don't do their job very well, or the superintendent does, they don't hang up very long, right? Um, superintendents, I told them, I said, there's forty-five openings every year. It's because it's hard to get all these mandates managed and taken care of, and so what we're asking for is, give us the funding without the mandates. Let the local school board do what they were hired to do or voted to do. And so I said, if there's a message there, is, and I, and I understand the government and state government, and you've got these pet projects, and everybody's got their own little deal, and I said, but I can tell you, I came from a school with less than two hundred students. I'm in a school that's got fifteen hundred students, they're vastly different. And if you put mandates on one, you could almost close the doors on it, because you can't pull it on. There's no money for more staffing to fulfill mandates. Uh, it's harder for us, but we can probably figure it out, Morehead's got other things, so now you're talking seven thousand students, you go down the, you know, the road to Holly, so. The message that, because Brendan Onick and I met with him, Brendan and I have been meeting quite a bit about all this legislation, because we're both going through building projects, we're both dealing with the cross subsidy with special that, that is similar in far as percentage goes. And, uh, so anyways, a good conversation, it was nice to meet two-on-one. So he got to hear us, and it's not a big room, we're shouting at people. Uh, and it was, we just, we appreciate the support, uh, we hope that we can see some of that, and so the other part is, I said, the public, uh, and we have a lot of negotiations coming up, I said, so they're going to see five and five, or four and two, and they're going to think, hey, this is a good year, this is the year that we can, you know. But I said, if you put all these mandates on it, it's not available for us to negotiate with much. So, I mean, it was kind of a, you know, reoccurring conversation is, funding without mandates, funding without mandates, give us the choice to work with our people. And so, you know, and they have certain other things with, uh, uh, health insurance, that pays so much, your health insurance, I said, that's great, we negotiate that already. And a dollar is a dollar is a dollar, so we have so much to spend, you want an insurance, you want an in-salary? Are we going to pay raises so paraprofessionals, they have a deal on the deal, paraprofessionals and unemployment, okay, all those are good things, we wish we could pay that too. But then I have to make, but then I have to make cuts to staff. So is that better for them? I said, that's, I mean, the heart reality is, I can't, and you've said this a hundred times, I can't sell our gasoline for a higher price. I can't sell our hamburgers or hot dogs for a higher price. I get state funding, and I have to make the state funding work. Or, we as a board have to go to the public and say, we didn't get enough, can you help us with a referendum, nobody likes that word. And so, that's why, man, this is an opportunity when the state has what they have, and if we can't get good funding this time, it's a little scary for superintendent and the board, because we still got to make this work, and, and we had two point four, and two point four five, and two, the last two years. It, it just doesn't cover inflation, inflation rate just this year is six point four percent. I said those are real cost of the school district, we pay inflated rates, just like anybody else does. Uh, the last calendar year, the inflation rate was overall almost eight, it was between seven and a half and eight, depending on time of the year. Well, if you're going to give us five and five, it just about doesn't cover the inflation rate. And actually, it doesn't. So, that's the reality, and so those were the conversations we had with him, uh, we've met with M R E A and M S, M S B A too, we have weekly meetings and kind of updates in legislation, there's been over twenty-five hundred bills introduced at the state legislature, so. Also, to Senator Cupix's defense, it's like, what? Twenty-five hundred bills, you're trying to figure out which one do I want to support, which one I don't, and there's so much language, and, you know, this goes, right? So, his first year, he's trying to figure it out too, so we know he's overwhelmed, that's why I said, we're just going to keep it simple, Brian and I, our message is funding without mandates, so think about that as you start to get education and certain mandates, so, yeah, great discussions, it's just, uh, I go down there, March fourteenth, um, our Lakes Country Service Cooperative, that whole region of superintendents, we meet with all of our area legislators down there then. That's getting pretty warm at that time, which means they're getting really close to start passing some more significant bills, we hope to have some input or some say in that, so. Just to give you a heads up there. Uh, payroll update, again, as you guys stated, we, we did meet with the union group today, the teachers' union, um, give them an update to where we're at, we feel very confident with just about every benefit. Uh, minus the four oh three B, we're still waiting for some, uh, clarification and some things, uh, with Omni. We've been in contact, we've had some conference calls with them, uh, it's been positive, uh, the last week's been a little slower, and that's been frustrating, because we asked a few more questions a week ago. Uh, we were hoping to have answers today, uh, didn't get the answers today, which was frustrating, I was hoping to have that for our meeting today with our teacher group and for you guys, but, uh, we are, we have definitely, um, solved a lot of mysteries, they'll say, in payroll, and, and so that's a good thing, we're getting closer, so. Uh, March twenty-seventh, oh, we have a, a concert now on the twenty-seventh. Uh, so we may have to move our board meeting, or we probably should, because the cap, or the concert's going to be in the gym here. And like we've done with basketball games, we moved it, and so that would be another one where I'd make a recommendation, we moved out to the middle school choir room again. I'm sorry. Well, because they're going to warm up in there, that's a good point, yeah. Maybe we should do it in Dillworth, huh? In this. Okay, we'll find a spot here, so why don't, why don't we, uh?
Do we have a time, what time does the concert start? Do we want to consider moving our meeting up to five thirty?
Yeah, get it done.
Yeah, we can make a recommendation to move it up, and as long as we advertise it, yeah, let's do five thirty, because then we can actually all get there.
And maybe we could have it here at five thirty?
We could do rather space. The flexible learning space.
Good. So, why don't we do this, let's, we go at five thirty, that way parents, we can be done, so you guys can get to the concert, right? Uh, and we'll find a location, okay, we'll find the best one, and there's a few here, I think, in the middle, that could work, so. Okay, yeah, good point. Uh, construction update, um, so some of you were, attended the, um, the basketball tournament over the weekend, so you saw what Dillworth looks like now, it's getting very close, the hallway, the flooring is going to get started on today, I left early today, because I had to come over here for a meeting the afternoon. But they started all, I don't think the flooring got came, they're going to have it done this week though. So that big hallway, the flooring will be done this week. Um, met with Ryan Kirby, the state inspector, on Fri, last Tuesday and Friday, and we are getting very close, uh, the elementary office is starting to move up. Uh, they're still conducting business down in the current office, because we, we're looking at a tentative, uh, official opening of March thirteenth. I brought that up to Ryan Kirby too, and, um, that gives everybody two weeks to get everything moved in, get parents notified and whatnot, so that's our, that's our target date. Um, there are, there's one item that we're waiting for, and it's tiles in the ceiling, uh, of that giant hallway. Long story short, they might not get here until the twentieth of March. And he might not let us get in there until those thirty tiles are in. We will see. Uh, construction update, Nico has done a really nice job with us cleaning up this site too, we have loose sands, we're paying, getting our, uh, payoffs done, or the, what was the word? Retainage, retainage, yeah, the retainage for each contractor, we're slowly closing them out, we're doing some of that in Dillworth, because we're getting very close, so. Yeah, so we're closing the books, you guys can see that in the budget for the construction too, where that's shrinking down, and we're still doing okay, and I can explain more of that if you have questions, but, uh, we also have our facilities committee meeting after board meeting, and so I'll give you more in-depth updates there, okay? That's it, questions for me?
Question, I don't know if you've talked about it yet, but the kids aren't allowed to go inside the building if they don't eat breakfast until, I think, you don't buy a pint of water. So what happens with that when we turn entry on the north end?
Yep, the big hallway, we're going to open that up.
Okay.
We talked about, because we're not going to have the playground available, because otherwise, we're going to have this awful traffic congestion. You probably noticed we didn't move the special ed people alongside over by my office now, that's helped a lot for preschool, it's also helped a lot in the morning, or a lot as relative, but.
I think it's been a noticeable difference.
Okay, so it is better, it's a little safer, and then, yeah, and then we're going to close the playground in the morning. So they have to get dropped off on the north end, otherwise, you know, that'll be, they'll still drop off down there, and it'll be a mess. Right, so we're going to have them come in the north end, and then that giant hallway. Because it is giant, we can house just about everybody to everybody until the bell rings, so, and or they can put their stuff in their locker and go down and have breakfast. Or they hang up that hallway, so, yep. So eight oh five, okay.
I think they play outside until eight oh five.
Sure.
Like, if you don't eat breakfast, you just fish out of the park.
Gotcha, yeah, okay, that makes sense, I'm with you now, okay. Other questions?
Alright, we'll move on to seven point one, this is the approval of the February thirteen, twenty twenty-three meeting, do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by David, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, eight point one, uh, we have our claims and accounts, Laura?
Two hundred seventy-six dollars, one penny.
Also included in your, um, packet is the treasurer's monthly budget report, we're going to approve the, uh, donation from Amundson Pungment Drywall of Gulf, Gulf Push Arts for the D G F boys golf team, and the resignation of Carly Field, a special education teacher, effective the end of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, do we have a motion? I got Nicole first, David, you want a second? Any questions or discussion?
Any questions on budgets, either one of them, we can talk after the facility's up too, but. If you notice, uh, I, I just want to make sure you see the school district budget is at fifty-five point two percent. Um, on the February is at fifty-eight percent, this, I talked to Marcus earlier today, and he said this pretty much closes out February. It's got everything in it pretty much, including the payroll, so, we're almost three percent, remember, one percent is a hundred eighty thousand, so that's good. This is only reflect fifty-five thousand of our S R funds. So remember how many S R fund dollars we're going to fall into this too, so. We're going to recover this fund balance, and, you know, a nice part of it, with the S R funds, plus how we're spending this year, so we're hoping it's going to be a nice return by the end of the year. Hey, construction, uh, the only thing I wanted to point out in construction, if that's okay, and that is that we have a nine point two percent leading in our cash balance, uh, if you look at that number, and then the number at the bottom, total project cost, you'll see there's four hundred thousand dollars, it's roughly different. Um, remember, that's a million dollar buffer in there, and another three hundred thousand of S R funds, so one point two a buffer, and so we're, we're okay. I just want to make sure you understand that, and on the back, it gives you our shop budget, shop, uh, oh, I didn't talk about the shop, we're going to we could go down there after, if you want to take a look at it, um, we will open that March thirteenth, it looks like. So it'll be a similar day to Dillworth, actually. Uh, yeah, so just wanted to make sure you guys got a chance to kind of, sometimes we'll go through the consensus, yet then we don't answer maybe your questions, I wanted to make sure I did that, just by today's.
So they weren't able to get the electrical box, or whatever.
We were, we got it last week, it was supposed to come in March, I think I told you March eighteenth or something, it showed up on the twentieth.
Nice.
He goes, it just showed up, and we went, huh, so, so it's already in, so we're going to be able to fire it up, I guess, earlier, so, yeah, I think we were going to get that part until, um, middle of whatever it was in March, so we thought, oh, great, here we go, but, oh. Somebody said their prayers, and it worked, so thank you for that.
Alright, we have a motion by Nicole, second by David, any further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, new and unfinished business, nine point one, this is the fiscal year twenty-four school calendar, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, this is the second reading, any questions? Oh, it was Micah, oh, I'm sorry, Micah, sorry.
I just heard Micah generally.
His tone must have been lower. Alright. Go on, David, and then I'll give it to Micah, your first motion, that's that for me, so. Um, any questions or discussion on the second reading of the school calendar? Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point two, this is an early retirement offer, um, or, this is the, to approve the individual early retirement incentive compensation offer is presented as part of the criteria established under Minnesota statute one twenty-two, eight point four eight, and effective the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second, second by Amy, any questions or discussion?
It's done every year.
Yeah, well, so this is what we discussed in our personal committee too, that we're going to leave it alone, and then they're going to bring it to negotiations, as to whether or not this will change, correct, David? So, it's going to stay the same as it was previously, until we have negotiations.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point three, this is an early retirement agreement for Donna Holberg, effective the end of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, do we have a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany, any questions or discussion?
Say no, does she have to say?
I don't think she'd like that, but. Thank you, Donna, for your service, so appreciate that. Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point four, this is an early retirement agreement for Alana Berkey, effective the end of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, do we have a motion? By David, is there a second? Um, I got Laura over here, I think, I heard first. Alright, again, thank you, Alana, for your years of service, I think thirty-seven, is it something like that?
Something.
I just talked to her today, she said thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight years.
She was thirty-six in D G F and two.
And the staple in that elementary school for years, so. I can just hear her basketball, so I feel lucky, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah, uh, so thank you. Yeah, uh so thank you to Alana. Uh all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, um this nine point five, early retirement agreement for Mike Anderson effective uh at the end of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. All right, I have to give a shout out to Mr. Uh Mr. Anderson, um if it was not for his class back in high school, I would have not known how to take notes in college. So I am extremely happy for him, but um he was one of my favorite teachers.
The longest tenured teacher we have right now.
Yep, yes, what is he at, forty-two?
Yes, because he's, he's only fifty, yeah.
We did skin a cat in his class.
So as the superintendent, I also want to say for these three, so I thought I'd wait till Mike's to say something, vote of three, this is uh so I got the pleasure of meeting with these three individuals, uh talked to some last year too, and they didn't know what they wanted to do, and then this year they came back and made the decision. This is a very difficult decision for them to make, it was for every one of them. Um I just really appreciate the opportunity, I had just a visit with them about what they're thinking and what they're planning, or why they might be. Um each one is obviously different and a different situation, but I just so appreciate what they've given to the district, obviously most of their life, and I I just really appreciate the conversation I was allowed to have with them and talk about what's next for them and what, how tough this decision was, which was really, it was good for me to hear. So, anyway, I just want to say.
So we have a motion by Amy, uh second by Nicole, uh all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, nine point six, this is our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three American Indian Plan compliance. Um this is something that we do every year, um Shannon uh can do more in the discussion, let's go ahead and get a motion. Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, you just wanna kind of fill it up again?
So everybody knows Wayne LaParte does this report for us, um he's done it for, I think, since he came here. Um but there's a, it's like all these things, uh for the state of Minnesota, you don't just do it, you turn it in, they say they're worse than your high school English teacher, anyway. And then you turn it in, they say, okay, you gotta fix this, you gotta do this, and so this isn't something that's that easy to go through. And yet it's an important, it's an annual thing, and so I just want to say it that way, so you understand that Wayne puts a lot of time into this, and you think, oh, that's nothing. It's, it is something. And and there's some funding that's tied to it, so that's why we have to gain compliance, but he does do the legwork and gives the reports done to the state, and uh so I just wanted to make sure you guys understand there's more to some of these things than you, than you think, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next board meeting is Monday, March thirteenth, six o'clock, the D G F community room, with policy committee meeting after. Um Brittany did email us today, she won't be in here, so when I forget next time, where's Brittany, has anybody talked to her? She's already communicated. So, um and then just a note, we're gonna just add a ten point three, just for um public to know, March twenty-seventh, we are gonna be moving our meeting up to five thirty um to accommodate for the choir concert. And team, I casted, um work was so nice to print these out here, we've got some school board workshop opportunities. Um and just sitting here briefly looking at this, I would really like us all to consider um building a high-performance school board team phase three, it would require two evenings here, March twenty-eighth and Tuesday, April fourth, I don't need an answer right now, I'm gonna keep now with the group along with Shannon, um I think this with us wrapping up construction and us wrapping up our issues with payroll that um this hopefully next year, we're gonna get to get in the weeds and do some really great things for D G F, and I want us to be teed up and ready to go, and I think that if we spent a little time together um doing this, and we can do a virtual here and have um work get us set up, we can bring supper in and um do this as a group, I think it would be very beneficial, so I'll send over the email. Um look at your schedules ahead of time, because this is a six-hour commitment, three on one night, three on another, but I think it'd be well worth our time, and I like that we can go do it in the evenings, no one has to take time off from it, so. Uh just consider that, I will email this week, you don't have to respond, you'll be in Canada, so. All right, so uh it's six thirty-four, let's call this meeting. And adjourn this meeting, not call it twenty, adjourn.